All right, I have seven o'clock. We'll bring this meeting of the Westland City Council to order. We'll begin today with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Andrea Rakowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Lando.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We'll move into special presentations and announcements. We have two this evening. The first one comes from Don Nicholson. So, Don, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Councilman, Council President, Mr. Hart and City Council Mayor. Come to you today to let everybody in the community know about the Cruisin' Heinz, or Cruisin' Heinz, I'm sorry. The All-American Wayne Road Cruise is this Saturday. Obviously, with the pandemic going on, we're changing the rules up a little bit this year. And we're trying to pass the word that we'd like the cruisers to limit the parking lots to forty vehicles per lot. Please, social distance, as we've all been learning from everybody else, these numbers are coming down for that reason. We also ask that people wear masks when they're in large groups and whatnot in the community. We want this to be one of the safer events. We want everybody to know that the community can come out and have a good time. Enjoy the cruise, sit on the side of the road, watch the cars go by. Please stop in and support the local community businesses. And that's what this event is all about. It's about bringing people to Westland and to be bringing people to the Westland businesses that are here twelve months of the year. One of the reasons why we do not bring in any vendors for this event. We want the community to benefit. So please make sure everybody has a good time, stay safe. And go to the AllAmericanCruise.com website and we have updates on everything there. And also the map is in the marketplace paper, so that'll show you all the different things that are happening. We have a cool shirt. I don't know if you can see it on me. I don't see my camera on, so that's all right. I'm happy to say that, but we do have some really cool shirts this year. So get out and buy one and come on out and have a great time and support the cause and support the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Next up, we have Police Chief DeDrucek.
Good evening, Council. I have two things I want to talk about briefly tonight. The first is that time of year where I remind all the residents about the fireworks. This time of year, the most common police call we get every year is firework complaints. And because so many residents are affected by fireworks, the Westland Police Department actively enforces the fireworks ordinance. We will again be proactively enforcing the ordinance again this year. Reminder that last year, Michigan Fireworks Safety Act and Westland City Ordinance was amended. So I'll take a quick opportunity to talk a little bit about that ordinance again. But under the adopted ordinance, there's only allowed twelve days of the year that you can use fireworks. For this upcoming season, the use of fireworks are only permitted on the following days. June twenty-ninth through July fourth, between eleven a.m. and eleven forty-five p.m. each of those days. July fifth, from eleven a.m. to eleven forty-five is only, the day after the Fourth of July is only permitted if it's on a Friday or Saturday. This year, it's on a Sunday, so it does not apply this year. And then the Saturday and the Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day from that same time, eleven a.m. to eleven forty-five. Please remember that the fireworks violations are a civil infraction, up to a thousand dollar fine. We need to respect our residents. We encourage everyone to celebrate the holiday season, but just be mindful of the fireworks. And a couple additional points are going to be that, remember, fireworks are not allowed on school grounds. They're not allowed on public property, school property, church property, or property owned by another person without their permission. And nobody's allowed to use fireworks without, while being under the influence of alcohol or drugs. And then, Council President, if you don't mind, I'd like to roll into the other announcement I had.
Please do. Thank you.
Okay, so this announcement's kind of for City Council. The mayor and I wanted to make you aware of something that's taking place tomorrow outside of City Hall in front of the Westland City Hall. And I'd like to invite Council to come if they'd like to come and attend and listen. Obviously, as you are aware, many communities in Western Wayne County have held protests, marches, and rallies over the incidents that occurred in Minnesota. In Westland, we've had several peaceful marches, including an impactful prayer walk yesterday hosted by Pastor Shelby of the Burning Bush Church. The Westland Police Department's been a part of these gatherings and we support our community. Each city has been addressing these issues individually. Each individual city's been speaking to the organized groups in the media in their own town. In fact, I'm an executive board member for the Wayne County Association of Chiefs of Police. And we with the mayors and the city managers and the Conference of Western Wayne feel that it's now time for us to begin collectively working together instead of each community working individually. I've personally spoken to the protesters in our community who've had a pretty consistent message to me. And their message has been, we want our concerns to be heard by the police department, by the city administrators, and we want a consistent opportunity to be heard. This includes the police chiefs of Western Wayne County, the mayors, the city managers, the ability to answer their questions and answer their concerns. So what we're doing is we're going to partner with the Western Wayne County branch of the NAACP and to create a forum for all of our community members. This is going to be a form of a public meeting where the public can come in. They can pose their questions and concerns directly to us, the city leaders, the mayors, the managers, and the police chiefs. And what we're going to do is we're going to ensure that there's continued communication. We've developed what we're going to call a listening tour. We hope that the creation of this new forum will provide a means and opportunity for progress and partnership. We see this as an opportunity for both the Western Wayne County Police Chiefs and the community to learn from each other. Through these open dialogue forums, the police chiefs will be able to gain a greater perspective from our communities and of their specific concerns. But while doing so, the community will have an opportunity to see and hear firsthand how many of the Western Wayne County Police Departments already have implemented a lot of the training and policies and the early warning systems for police officers that the community's been asking for. So moving forward, the Listening Tour will give us an excellent opportunity to create a model community partnership for the rest of the nation to follow. But tomorrow at eleven a.m. outside of the Westland City Hall, we're going to be announcing this to the media. We've gathered the mayors and the police chiefs from the Western Wayne County. We're going to come together and talk about this program. So, Council, if you'd like to attend, you're welcome to join us. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and take questions from the public on the agenda. Residents will have three minutes to address any questions they have on today's business schedule. Are there any questions on the agenda from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Final call, any questions from the public? All right, seeing no hands raised, we move back to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll move Council President.
I have a motion by Council President Proton Michael Lando, supported by Councilwoman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I have questions on items B through E. My question is, this is for management fees to be paid to the Municipal Service Bureau totaling four hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars over the next year for the four locations listed on the consent calendar. The Municipal Service Bureau is made up of the Deputy Mayor, Michael Reddy, the Finance Director, Steve Smith, Mac Mayfield, and Delano Hornbuckle, who are two mayoral-appointed commissioners. So my question is, with this Municipal Service Bureau being made up of city employees and appointees, how is this four hundred thousand dollar roughly fee paid and who gets the money?
Dave, can you address that?
Yeah, through the chair. These contracts are for, to pay the employees that actually work at the golf course, the ice arena. They run and operate the arena. Also, for the crossing guards, any of the crossing guards that you see during the school year, that pays for them as well. And the park ranger program as well. So those, those contracts with the Municipal Service Bureau pays for all of those salaries for the whole year.
Okay, thank you. So what you're stating is that the four hundred and three thousand dollar cost is one hundred percent of the salary cost that the city pays to staff those four locations? One hundred percent is going towards personnel salaries and is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
Okay, and there's no separate funding that is distributed to any member of the... None of these funds are distributed to any member of the Municipal Service Bureau?
So two of the members, the Delano Hornbuckle and Mac Mayfield, do receive a stipend of sixty dollars per meeting. And we meet quarterly, so a minimal stipend for those. Myself, we do not receive anything whatsoever. So myself or the deputy mayor, so.
Okay, and can you clarify why these, this bureau is handling personnel? Why the personnel for these four locations is separate from every other city department which runs through our H.R.?
Jim Fasson, did you have something to add to that?
I did, through the chair, to the Councilwoman and to the other council members. The Municipal Service Bureau is a nonprofit corporation. It was set up in nineteen seventy-seven. It's been around for forty-three years. It serves as an adjunct for the city for these sort of temporary seasonal kind of positions and has, as I say, for forty-some years. So that's the historical aspect of the Municipal Service Bureau, the Michigan nonprofit corporation.
Okay, thank you. And this, this, um, thank you. I'll pause there. Thank you.
All right, next question comes from Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the city clerk. Just a quick question on item H on the precinct change for precinct twenty-eight. Curious what type of notice is going to be sent out? I know you typically would send out a notice. What list are you going to be using? Because I know the state is sending out absentee ballot requests to several, several people. If you could just elaborate on that. And I know you've done a good job in the past at doing outreach. Just a suggestion, on Election Day, if you could put up a sign in front of Burning Bush Ministries that says polling location is moved for this election. And if you could just touch on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So similar to two different occurrences within my service where precincts had to temporarily be moved. We do exactly what is required by law and then some. And the then some is that we also place signage at the location, as you just mentioned. So what we will do is we will use a list of registered voters that is in effect for that precinct on a date certain, following your consideration of this item. We will contract with our ballot printing vendor. They will create a postcard. It'll be identical to the postcards folks in other precincts have received in the past. It'll indicate that for this election only, the precinct is being moved from location A to location B. Location B's address will also be included, as well as our contact information, should anybody have any questions. So people will not receive a new voting card because this is temporary. And again, it follows the state recommended action. And I should add too that regarding stakeholders, I did reach out after I contacted through email the city council and the mayor. And I did reach out to folks that have prominence within the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. I asked each of them if they had other people they would recommend that I contact. And so I went through the list and I spoke with every person that was mentioned except for one. And with that individual, I left a voice message. So I'm hoping that the word does get out and that we don't have anybody that, you know, indicates that they did not become aware.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott, I see you've withdrawn your hand. Is that correct? You had your hand up for a second.
Councilman Hersberg asked my question and the clerk answered it. Thank you.
I assumed as much. Just wanted to double check. Are there any other questions from the council? Any other questions from the council? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Lando.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Wrong button. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held June one, two thousand twenty, at six o'clock p.m. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and MSB for Westland Ice Arena Management for a one-year period commencing July one, two thousand twenty, ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Amount, one hundred forty-two thousand. Approval of agreement between City of Westland and Municipal Service Bureau for Westland Golf Course Management for a one-year period commencing July one, two thousand twenty, ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Amount, one hundred fifteen thousand five hundred. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and Municipal Service Bureau for Crossing Guard Management for a one-year parent, period commencing July one, two thousand twenty, ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Amount, eighty thousand dollars. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and Municipal Service Bureau for Park Ranger Services. The contract is for a one-year period commencing July one, two thousand twenty, ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Amount, sixty-six thousand dollars. Approval of workers' compensation coverage agreement with Willis of Michigan Incorporated for the city's self-insured program for the fiscal year two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one. Adoption of prepared resolution for the City of Westland to temporarily waive the late fee associated with the late property transfer affidavit. Last item on the consent calendar as approved today. Adoption of prepared resolution to approve a temporary precinct location change for precinct twenty-eight. Burning Bush Ministries to be cited in Elliott Elementary School, the closest precinct to precinct twenty-eight voters for the August two thousand twenty election. Moving to new business, approval of request to upgrade the city's existing BSNA software. One-time implementation cost shall not exceed twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. And the annual maintenance fee is three thousand seven hundred five dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Godbout. Whoever supported, wave your hand. I only heard the voice. Supported by Councilman Hersberg. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Green.
You'll have to mark that as a no, clerk, if she can't answer.
I'll mark it as an absent. Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Lando.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item two. Introduction of budget amendments through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty, for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
I need the hands waved. I think the motion was from Councilman Larry Hersberg, who has supported Councilman Godbout. There we are. You guys were coming in so fast, I can't even tell who they are, so you have to help me out a little bit. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Councilman Lando.
Thanks, Council President. Just briefly, if I can have our budget director just run through a high-level, what these budget amendments are for? I know we just had a study session. We have a lot of members of the public that are on. And obviously, for those watching at home, if you could just give a quick, maybe a minute or two, high-level overview?
Through the chair, sure. So these budget amendments typically occur every June. They're year-end budget amendments, just to kind of true everything up. Using the most recent financial information that we have, at a high level, due to COVID- nineteen, state revenue is down and the public safety revenue is down as well. And then police and fire expenditures are higher than budget. And these are offset by lower expenditures throughout other departments as well. And I think that's about it.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions from council? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Lando.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item three. Waive procedure to introduce and adopt in the same meeting budget amendments through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty, for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty.
So moved. Support.
I got a motion by Councilman Lando, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Lando.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item four. Adoption of budget amendments through May thirty-one, two thousand twenty, for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Lando.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item five. Introduction of ordinance one seven seven A one. An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Westland by amending Article Seven entitled Massage Parlors.
So moved. Or?
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Lando. Mo, you sent out the letter earlier to council. Can you just please explain these next three items and high level for everybody?
Sure, no problem. So this item specifically is different than six and seven. Number five is the introduction of the ordinance. Well, it's an ordinance amendment specifically for the business licensing section of the Code of Ordances, which regulates licensing for massage parlors. Basically, we're adding some new requirements for applications and also for operations. There's, I mean, I can go through them. I don't know if you want me to, but basically, we're just cleaning up some language. We're defining what a massage establishment actually is. It was not defined previously. We're also allowing some exemptions while we're defining them. And we're asking for additional requirements while someone is submitting an application that wasn't asked for before. We are requesting that these applications be annual renewals, non-transferable, and we're adding additional requirements to the actual operation of the business in terms of posting hours of operations, requiring them to close at a certain time, requiring that they post each individual massage therapist license that is issued by the state, which wasn't provided before, and additional requirements for the safety of massage therapists and for what has been going on with massage parlors in southeast Michigan, just to kind of mitigate some of those issues. And also for police to be able to, or enforcement for that matter, to be able to quickly verify upon inspection what's going on at the facility. And then, real quick, number six and seven are strictly related to the zoning ordinance. It's converting the two, it's converting the use from what's classified right now as an administrative approval permitted use to a special land use in both the CB three district and the industrial districts where they currently exist today. And that's it.
Thank you, Mo. Thanks for addressing six and seven. I knew they were tied together, but they're different items. But I figured it'd be helpful for you just to explain all three at once. If any of the council members do have questions on those particular items, save it till six and seven. So is there any discussion on item five? Councilman Hersberg has his hand raised.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Mo and Attorney Fasson for taking the time to work on the ordinance. I read through it. I think it's a good ordinance. It's going to clean up a lot of the issues that we were having. Just a quick question. We just recently extended the moratorium on these. So with the adoption of this ordinance at the next meeting, will we be lifting that moratorium or will it stay in place? Thank you.
Mr. Fasson, can you, oh, sorry. I guess, Mo, you beat me to it. Go ahead, Mo.
I think Fasson would answer the same, but the intention is, well, was to see what would happen tonight. And if the intention of council was to final adoption at the next meeting, we would also request at the same meeting to lift the moratorium. Yes.
Thank you. Are there any... Thank you. Are there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item six. Introduction of Ordinance two four eight eight nine six. An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Westland by amending Section one ten nine point six of Article nine. Chapter one ten, entitled CB three, General Commercial Business District.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item seven. Introduction of Ordinance two four eight eight nine seven. An ordinance to amend the city, I'm sorry, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Westland by amending Section one ten one zero point three of Article nine of Chapter one ten, entitled Light Industrial District.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item eight. Approval of Site Plan Approval Extensions on behalf of the following applicants in response to COVID nineteen. Planning Department number two 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 nine C, Perrinville Residential PUD. Planning Department number one eight nine six C. Central City US ICE. Planning Department two two zero three A, Northwest Corner of Warren and Merriman. Planning Department number one nine eight two B. Three zero four three five Cherry Hill. It's a gas station. And Planning Department number two 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 six, five seven five nine North Newburg, oil change and car wash.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Actually, Mo, do you want to go ahead and just introduce that real quick, just briefly?
Sure, yeah. So, site plans from the day that they are approved by the city council have a year to commence construction and pull a building permit. If there is no building permit that's pulled, it is expired. They do have the option of extending for an additional year. I've been here for one of those extensions that was approved. Basically, here, there's some projects, these specifically, that have not pulled a building permit since they have been approved, site plan-wise. So as a courtesy to these developers, we are asking that they be provided an additional six-month extension in addition to their existing timeline that they're on right now. Because of the state of emergency that the governor put in place. That's all.
Thank you. We have a question from Councilman Rakowski.
Thank you. Through the chair to the planning director with PD two two zero three A. The northwest corner of Warren and Merriman. Didn't they seek a extension in the past?
You did approve, it was, it wasn't all of council. I don't remember exactly who, but the council did approve an extension, yes. And that was granted in the date listed, September fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so they haven't made any progress on developing that site that was previously parkland?
They have not. There's been some discussions going on with Wayne County. I don't know what the resolution or where they're at with that, but they were trying to acquire some additional land for park, for additional parking.
Okay, Council President, at this time, I would like to make a motion to exclude PD two two zero three A from the extension.
Support.
There's a motion to exclude the PD reference from the motion and supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, and thank you, Andrea, for bringing that up. We had a very different city council at the first time when this came forward and had received a lot of flack, a lot of concerns from council. The petitioner, he assured us a hundred and ten percent that he had somebody to move into that building. He was going to build a nice building right away. We shared concerns about nearby strip malls and that this was going to be a new strip mall. There was conversation about it being medical. At this point, I agree with Councilwoman Rakowski. We should just remove it and see what happens from there. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have comments from Councilman Green.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to Councilwoman Rakowski. Can you just clarify your reason for asking that this be removed? Thank you.
Gladly. I don't know that that's procedure, so forgive me. You know, I have a multi-fold reason for that. The first one being, I believe we should be preserving the parkland for the park. Second of all, I feel that that is a very dangerous intersection to be introducing a not necessarily just the business, but the idea of a parking lot just for bicyclists. To me, it's dangerous. It hasn't been developed yet, and it, you know, takes away from green space and parkland. And that, to me, is it's not my preference, to put it shortly. So those would be my reasons why. It just, it's, we're on extension number two, and no progress has been made. I'm cynical to an extent to believe that in six months, they will make any more progress.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mo, can you bring me up to speed on this particular request? Was this the gentleman who wanted, he had to get approval from Wayne County to put that parking lot down?
That's, that's correct. He was trying to acquire through the form of a lease. A portion of Wayne County property directly to the east. In addition to that, Wayne County was requiring some improvements to their park at the cost of the developer. The city was made aware that there was several meetings as recently as last week. I don't remember the specific day, and we do not, I don't think they have come to a resolution yet on what that was. Probably should have checked before that meeting, but I don't know what the status is of that lease yet. The board has, the Board of Commissioners has to approve, and I think they requested some additional information from the party that was trying to enter the lease agreement.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm, thank you for that update, because I thought that's who we were talking about. It rings a bell. Now, I think I called some of the real estate brokers who submitted letters. This, I thought this was like a year ago, that this gentleman came before city council, because when he came before city council, he said that he would have approval from the county within six months. And city council at that time, every member of city council except me voted to give him a one-year extension to get the, the document, the alleged documentation, although the, the county said that they will make a determination within six months. So my objection is not due to the location. It's due to the fact that he had already proven himself. We had several extensions, and we had nothing to, in my opinion, to even give him the last year-long extension that he received from city council. So I will be supporting this. Thank you. Or I'll support Councilwoman Rakowski's motion to, to remove this.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. And, and Mo, I'm glad that you brought that up. I, I know that it was on, whether it was a subcommittee of the county or whether it was on the county commission agenda to discuss it at the last meeting. To the best of my knowledge, they still, they, the county still has not come up with an agreement or taken action on it. I would, I would, at this point, the gentleman's been going through quite a bit, or the to try and get this approved and try and work out a deal with the county. And I think by us taking this off the table at this point in time, particularly if he's this close to trying to get his plans together and get approval from the county is a little short-sighted on our part. And would force him to go through the whole procedure again of resubmitting all of the plans and everything else. And nothing's been done down at the county for the past three or four months. So the fact that there's any movement on this at all from the county, or at least discussions on it, makes me want to leave this as an open item and grant him at least the six-month extension. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor, do you have something to add?
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and Councilman Godbout. Thank you for your comments there. Counsel, I'd ask you to, to, to please consider letting this, this project work its way through the county. I know that there's some of you on city council that voted no when this, this originally came up. And you sent them back to the drawing board to come up with tenants, and they came back to us and they did that. And then they've kind of been stuck in this twofold with working with the county and also working through COVID. So it appears that you, the, the council's in favor of granting the extensions to the other projects. So I'd ask you to be consistent. At the end of the day, they, their issues with the county are definitely outside of our control. But like I said, I respect the fact that there were those of you on the council that voted no. The first time it came through, you voted no when the project came through and was approved, and you voted no on the, the extension. So there's certainly nothing wrong with being consistent in your voting, but with that said, we haven't seen any of these projects really move through the COVID, other than the Garden City Hospital project and the Westland Banquet Facility. So I'd ask you to consider a little more patience on this project. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your input, and mayor, and Councilman Godbout. I appreciate your, your candid remarks as well. I'm going to respectfully disagree. They came to us in September of two thousand eighteen and have yet to make progress, where US ICE is, you know, making huge changes to their site. They're also in the process of hiring individuals. I think it's, in this case, we don't have jurisdiction over what the county decides to do. And, you know, two years, their extension from the last time council met and approved this goes through September fourth of two thousand twenty. I think there's ample time to have already put the wheels into motion. And I, I know that the county is dealing with other issues, but, you know, I can see this going on for more than six months, and then a year, and then two more years, and we'll be revisiting this. So that'll be my final remark on it, and I appreciate your patience in allowing me to bring up this item.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify some of what the mayor stated, which was untrue. There was not one city council member who voted no against this venture each time. And actually, I voted yes the first time after I called the real estate brokers to verify that the letters that he, the gentleman submitted were actually valid. This particular gentleman is one of the, our many long-term business affiliates in the city. So there's pre-existing relationships here. There were people on council who made excuses for the lack of providing proper documentation at that particular time. And, which is happening again tonight. There is nothing that would prevent this gentleman from getting his ducks in a row, getting his paperwork together, and resubmitting his request to city council. He does not have that, and here we are two years later. So with the exception of those people who have pre-existing relationships with this gentleman, he is not prepared to move forward. And if there were no relationship, we would move along with any other contractor, just like we have done in the past. So I don't think there should be an exception made. And for the record, again, there's been no, not, not one council person who's ever voted no consistently against this gentleman. So that is actually a lie. Thank you.
Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. I actually voted against this several times, except for the last time. This goes back two to three years. They came back, they came to council for rezoning at least twice. Then they came at least twice for the site plan. There was a lot of issues I had. Sidewalks and traffic issues being some of the main ones. But he did end up working it out with the sidewalk, and I voted for it the last time. But I think the first about four times that this came to a vote, whether it was for the site plan or for rezoning, I voted against it. And I'm actually glad to see that if we have a chance of stopping this plan. You know, I, I don't agree with taking part of Heinz Park and making it part of a parking lot for his business, whether there's going to be, you know, park benches there or not. It's going to be used for his business. And the other main thing is, there's too many empty buildings up and down the street, you know. We're going to build this one. It's going to water the market down even more. So just to explain that. Thanks.
Mayor, did you have something else to add?
I'd just like to thank the council member Hersberg for clearing up the, the comment that, that the other council person said that that it was a lie, just because her memory doesn't precede the, the amount of votes that went into this. And also to say that there was some sort of pre-existing relationship is slanderous. And I would say that this project, the city council, has been very patient, and I think that under the guise of being business-friendly and trying to create taxable value off a difficult piece of property to develop is where we were at. To say that there was some sort of pre-existing relationship is not fair to certainly all of us, but also to the petitioner as well. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, this is a reminder. There's a motion to remove PD two two oh three A from the motion. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. Two two zero three A is excluded from new business item eight.
Moving back to the original motion. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Green.
Yes, respectfully, I just wanted to add, in terms of the mayor's last assertion. Peter Hersberger, Councilman Hersberg, actually confirmed what I said, which was there was not one council member who voted against that project consistently. What Councilman Hersberg stated was that initially he voted against it, and the last time it came before council, he voted in support. Thank you.
Right. So there any discussion relevant to the new amended motion? Actually, I have Councilman Godbout.
Yes, thank you. And I guess I have a question, since we've, in essence, denied one application, or one of these cases. And I guess the question would go to the city attorney's office. Are we setting some kind of a dangerous precedent by allowing these others to go through without them submitting a request to go through and have an extension to their plan? Thank you.
Mr. Fasson.
So the removal of the one request, I don't think puts at jeopardy the
So the removal of the one request, I don't think puts at jeopardy the, uh, quest forwarded by the planning director to acknowledge what has occurred as a result of the COVID pandemic and seek to, uh, proactively extend these six months. Um, so I, I think you can proceed with the main, um, motion as before you as amended.
Thank you.
Are there any other discussion on the amended motion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks again. Uh, yeah, I'll be in support. Uh, as it was mentioned, you know, the one that was removed, nothing happened with it. Some of these here, US ICE, they've, they've come a long way with their development. The banquet center is moving along. It's going to be a huge building, uh, visible changes. Uh, so I have no problem extending their, their permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion from the council? Roll call.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Green.
Did you repeat what are, yes, the, um, number eight now that this is for the remainder of item eight?
That's correct, Councilwoman. We removed item P, uh, 2203 PD at the previous motion and amended this one. And the motion is now on the item eight, 2203 removed.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item nine, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the disposition of one property, 34353 John Hawk, acquired under the community development block grant home and city redevelopment programs to adjoining property owners and eligible buyers in exchange for the resulting public purpose.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support?
Supported by Councilman McDermott. Uh, Joanne, is there anything you want to add to this?
Uh, no, thank you. Well, I will add that this, um, property came to the city last year through, uh, tax foreclosure. And, um, it will be purchased for the development of a new affordable housing.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. Through the chair to Joanne, it says here, uh, just, can you just clarify, it, it says we're going to sell to adjoining property owners or eligible buyers? Do we know which of those is going to, are we selling it to the neighbors or is it going on the market?
Through the council president, this will, this is not being sold to the adjoining owner. This is being sold to, um, uh, a private person who will construct the house.
Thanks.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 10, adoption of resolution to exempt temporary outdoor dining areas from the temporary use requirements through October 31, 2020.
So moved. Or, or.
Motion, motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbaugh. Uh, Mo, is there anything you want to add to that? I think that was pretty explanatory, but is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I, I guess just to put it out there for people to know that if, if this passes, the city will, uh, be approving administratively within 24 hours, hopefully, um, applications that are made for temporary outdoor dining. Um, police, uh, I'm sorry, fire chief, uh, building director and planner will review and approve, uh, those applications. And, uh, that would be in effect through October 31st, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Uh, first question comes from Councilman Londo.
Uh, thank you, President Hart. Not really a question, just I want to take a minute to thank the administration. Um, I've been on these, uh, Wayne County Workplace Reentry meetings, uh, every Friday. And this is something that's been talked about with, uh, Wayne County Business Development Team, different Chamber of Commerce's, our Economic Development Department from the City of Westland, uh, Chamber of Commerce's and DEA's as well. So, a lot of cities are doing this and I'm glad, uh, to see Westland's getting on board. So I'm in full support of this.
Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks. Echo the comments of Councilman Londo. Uh, thanks a lot, Mo. You've been hard at work for a while. It seems like, uh, working on this stuff. And, uh, if anything else comes up, uh, please bring it forward. You know, this, this kind of puts the focus on boosting our, our local businesses. So, you know, if there's anything along the same lines as this that you, you can come up with and bring forward, I, I think council will be in support.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? A law for mine. I echo the comments of my two colleagues. It's kind of a no-brainer. It's the right thing to do for our businesses. Uh, doing everything we can to stimulate them, getting them back, giving them the ability to make a living as well as giving us the ability to maybe get out for the day and enjoy the weather and eat something and not have to clean it up at home. Uh, but all jokes aside, no, this was, this is the right move. Um, and a lot of people were talking about needing to have this opportunity in the business side. So, uh, I think it's a no-brainer and I encourage all my colleagues to support it, which I, I feel comfortable thinking that they will. Uh, with that, roll call.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 11, approval of proposed land division. Parcel 046010062 and 046010306, City of Westland, North Side of Marquette, just west of Carlson, Planning Department number 2235.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Londo.
For.
Or by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Well, Mo, did you want to bring this back up and talk about this? We talked about this before. Any, any clarification you want to offer on this?
Uh, if you'd like to see exactly what's going on from a lot, uh, and parcel standpoint, I could, I, I could pull it up on the aerial real quick. This is just a cleanup of city land records, uh, from the previous land sale that happened in 2019 or, or deed that happened in 2019.
Okay. So we'll see if there's any discussion and we'll be prepared if they have any. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Well, you're off the hook, Mo. Good job. Uh, roll call.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item 12, approval of voucher.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. Um, so on the first page, just so everybody's aware, we got about $4,000 worth of, uh, security deposits for hall rentals were given back. Um, through the chair to finance. Is this going to be a, is this going to be it? Or are we, are we going to be expecting more than this? I'm assuming that these, uh, people booked the room rentals for when city hall was closed. Uh, is there going to be more than this or is that pretty much it? And have we reached out to them to see if they want to, uh, reschedule? Thanks.
So through the chair, um, this is a majority of them. There still are some more refunds coming. Um, you'll probably see them on the next vouchers, but a majority of them, uh, have either been refunded, um, on this voucher or the previous one. So.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We now move into citizens' comments portion of the business meeting. At this time, residents will be able to speak for up to three minutes and address the council with concerns and questions. Uh, since everyone here appears to be using the Zoom app, you'll just use your raise your hand feature. I will recognize you and then you'll, the floor will be yours. You'll have three minutes. At this time, is there any of our attendees who wish to speak? Person I have from Pastor Edward Pruitt. Hear me, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir. You have three minutes at this time. Please begin.
Thank you. Through the chair to Councilwoman, uh, Tasha Green. Um, the first question that I have, I have two-part question. Um, in the beginning of the, uh, session, it was an announcement about the protest. Um, those two seem to be all connected. Uh, you attended two of the protests, uh, at, outside of the police department. Uh, were they the same as the prayer walk?
No, they, they were not the same as the prayer walk.
And was anyone else, uh, leading the ones at, uh, outside the police department?
Uh, yes, you led the one outside of the police department as, as well as others in the community. Um, and then, uh, Bishop Shelby of Burning Bush Church led the prayer walk yesterday, uh, in Westland.
Okay. I just wanted to get a clarification on that. Um, and in regard to the same line of, uh, thinking there, uh, was there any type of, uh, is it concerning to you that I was invited to an 11 o'clock at La Bona City Hall instead of the Westland one? For the listening tour?
I'm so sorry. I have a terrible internet connection over here. Can you repeat? Is that for me? Uh, can you repeat that?
Yep. I'm just asking the question. We're putting it out on record. Uh, is it concerning?
Pastor Perd, real quick, usually back and forth is a little difficult in these kinds of situations. So, uh, your clock continues to run while you do it. So perhaps it might be best if you, I paused your clock because I jumped in. Uh, if you just want to ask all of your questions at once, and if you're directing them to the councilwoman, she could probably answer them at one time. You, you, it's going to be much less effective if you're going back and forth. That's just my opinion. So I thought I'd ask you to do that. Uh, and I'm going to lay off here and I'm going to hit this, I'm going to get you started back up.
Okay. I'll just skip to my last part of my question.
Uh, just one second Pastor Pruitt, point of order, council president, the policy, actually our policy and procedures and also, um, uh, it, it allows, um, residents or guests to pose questions to city council members or the administration and then retain the remainder of their time after we are done speaking. I couldn't hear him because of my, um, connection and I do apologize, but he is still entitled to his full three minutes after one of us responds. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I, I agree, but it's, I'm just letting you know, I agree. Um, it's really difficult to do that at this time with all the technology. So I'm just trying, I'm asking for consideration so that we're effective.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That is perfectly fine. I was just alluding to, I was invited to the city hall in La Bona when the protest and my focus is on Westland instead of invited to the Westland for the listening tour. Um, but, but final part of my question is in regards to, uh, what we're trying to do with a better Westland. The question that I have, I'm posing is this, Councilwoman Green, do you believe there is an ethics issue in the government of Westland that needs oversight covering the government of Westland concerning budgets, policing, community development, ethical concerns and much more? Why or why not?
Uh, Pastor Pruitt, I would say yes, there is an ethics issue in the city of Westland. And that may be one reason why the mayor refuses to seat an ethics commission in our city, although the charter requires him to do so. The ethics commission was disbanded after, uh, Judge Cicirelli left the, the mayor's office and, uh, Mayor Wild was, uh, appointed to the, the mayor's seat. Um, yes, I believe there is a, a multitude of issues, many of which would have and could have been reviewed by an ethics commission, but we don't have one in our city and which is actually against our city constitution and it's, it's essentially against the law, but city council members will not enforce the law and require the mayor to appoint an ethics commission. So we don't have one. Thank you.
That is all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Pruitt, do you mind if I?
Who's, who's chief? Uh, sure, we're off the rails already. Let's go.
I apologize. I just thought that maybe I could take this opportunity to, um, clarify. I think Pastor Pruitt misunderstood what I said earlier is, uh, when I announced this at the beginning of the meeting, I was, uh, when I invited Pastor Pruitt to accompany to was tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the Westland City Hall's press conferences. We're going to be announcing this, um, listening tour that's going to be in the future. In the future, it's going to be, the first one's going to be in La Bona, but when I invited Pastor Pruitt to, and hopefully he's still listening, is I invited him to accompany me tomorrow at 11 o'clock for the press conference. Um, tomorrow's not really a public event. It was something that I invited him to come and accompany me to tomorrow. So if he's listening, Pastor Pruitt, yes, tomorrow, 11 o'clock, it is at Westland City Hall. If you wanted to accompany me there, that's what I was having you come through. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next resident comment comes from Mark Rosso. I hope I pronounced that right. Uh, at this time, Mark, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. You have three minutes. Uh, please begin.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, I support the medical and adult use of marijuana, but, uh, have been concerned with marijuana businesses, uh, proximity to homes and the effects of raising children next to a dispensary. Uh, I agree with the city that it's important that all retail stores should be at least 250 feet from homes. At least that's what I had read and heard. Uh, can you confirm that all marijuana stores will need to be 200 feet from homes, including those stores that happen to have marijuana grows and, uh, processing facilities attached to them?
Uh, is that the extent of your, uh, questions?
Yes, that is.
Jim Faso, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that's 250 foot, uh, from any property line for any of the businesses. Uh, can you confirm that?
I'll, uh, that, that's true on the dispensaries. Mo, do you want to step in on the industrial cited, uh, properties?
Sure. So, uh, there's two retailers permitted and those have to be 250 feet property line, a property line, uh, from residential uh, to commercial and then a thousand feet from schools, property line, property line. In the industrial, we're allowing for, um, types of businesses, for individual businesses that'll, that will be permitted to grow, uh, retail and process. Uh, those have to be 1,000 feet away from a school, uh, and do not have the residential buffer, uh, restriction. Um, when we were discussing this, uh, with council, it was, uh, discussed that industrial properties are large. They tend to be a, a, away from, um, homes. Um, and they can contain most of the negative, uh, impacts, uh, if any are generated by the marijuana activity within their sites. Uh, so there was no buffer, um, required from a residential property in the industrial.
All right. So yeah, the fact stated that all retail require 250, but, uh, so it, it, it varies between either the, um, either industrial or the, um, residential areas, correct?
Correct. Okay. You all set?
Yep. Uh, any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the public? We have a hand raised from Janine. Janine, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Um, I just, I have a question about the CARES Act for Westland. I personally applied to receive some PPE. I cannot seem to get a hand sanitizer or face masks. Uh, my husband's on SSDI and I've been work furloughed. However, I'm not sure the reason why I would need to produce three of my pay stubs in order to apply for that, being that the question is if you have trouble obtaining this stuff, what does my payroll have to do with that? Especially being furloughed in SSDI, we don't even get pay stubs anymore. Most employers don't even give them. Everything's paperless. I don't understand the purpose for the PPE. That was my question. Why do you need that for that? The question that you asked is if you have trouble obtaining it, we will help supply it. What did my wages have to do with that?
Okay. Uh, I don't see Joanne on right now. Mayor, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I can certainly try to. First of all, uh, Janine, if, if you'd like to call the.
Yeah, I can certainly try to. First of all, Janine, if you'd like to call the mayor's office tomorrow, I can certainly help you through that process. I do believe that we have received several emails, council may have too. I know Joanne just actually sent an email to all of you guys to address this issue. But basically, in a nutshell, this is this is money that's flowing through HUD. It's federal money. So there is some stipulations to it. But Janine, if you want to call my office tomorrow, 467-3200, I'll certainly help you work through that process.
Thank you. That was all my question.
Okay, Janine, thank you. All right, are there any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Final call, any other questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move on to comments from the administration, begin tonight with Mayor Wild.
Thank you. First of all, council, thank you for your your work on tonight's agenda. Two items in particular is working with Mo and Aubrey and coming up with some temporary outdoor seating arrangements. Something that that it seemed like everybody was on the on the same page. We're going to do everything we can to try to help our businesses get back started up. And there may be a few other things. I think one of you actually mentioned if there's something else that council needs to consider. So we'll definitely come back to you with anything we think that on a short term basis that collectively the city can do to help these businesses. And also for the work in the massage parlor ordinance, I know that it seemed like it kind of drug out for a little bit, but there was a lot of work being done behind the scenes through city attorney Jim Foson's office and certainly Mo here at City Hall. So thank you for your work and efforts on that. Council, just to give you a real quick update, as you know, we opened City Hall to the public last week. We're probably only one of a handful of communities that have actually done that successfully. And I have to tell you that it's been going incredibly smooth. We had a great response from the public. We probably have processed more residents and business business owners than we probably thought we would have. So we're, it's a good thing. And we're starting to ramp back up our workforce, bringing people off of furlough. We did have some people that came back today and we have more that are scheduled to come back next Monday. And Joanne was on her, she could tell you about Jefferson Barnes, but it appears that they've had a smooth reopening as well. I had a chance to spend a little bit of time last night over at the golf course and they are certainly, they've been open for business, but they've done a great job of preparing the golf course for to be safe for users. They've done a great job there. The library and the senior center are working on their reopenings and we'll be back to share more information with you on that soon. At this point, all the city parks are open. I had a chance to drive through several of them yesterday. We do have a little bit of touch up work to do in the parks. I know that this week our crews are going to be out there. So a lot of the parks had received, you know, a nice cleanup before Memorial Day, but there's still a couple finishing touches that we need to do around some of the amenities. So you'll probably see our folks in the parks all throughout this week. As far as the fields go, baseball field, soccer fields. At this point, we're our major focus is on getting the parks nice. We like them with the amenities, nice and clean. And then we'll start to work on the soccer and baseball fields as as we get more people back from furloughs and as we get closer to a startup for those youth athletic groups that use them. Kyle, our Parks and Rec Director, started back today and one of his goals is to have the splash park open to the public on Wednesday, July 1st, which will have us up and operating in time for the 4th of July weekend. There'll certainly be some some restrictions there and we'll we'll keep you updated on what exactly those are going to look like. Our plan is to also bring the concession stand online that weekend as well. And by council moving forward on the MSB contracts for this for the Park Rangers, we'll be able to staff that in time for the holiday weekend. For those of you that are on the call tonight, I can remind you that tomorrow night, we're going to have our COVID Town Hall meeting. It's going to be a Zoom meeting and if if you're not on this call, by the time you see this, it might be a little bit too late. But if there's anybody on the call that wants to join, you can click on on the city's homepage on the COVID Town Hall. There's actually a connection to the Zoom meeting. We're also taking questions at E to you can email them to us to event@cityofwestland.com. And this town hall will be hosted by our Fire Chief Mike Stratner, myself and several members of the administration will be talking about basically the city's response to COVID-19. We'll be talking about the latest statistics, the latest information that we have and the city's reopening plans as well. There was a question tonight about the Westland CARES Act, and I would encourage everybody that has interest in this. So you can go to the city's website and click right on the Westland CARES Act. We do have directions there. And if you have any questions, you can always call the mayor's office. I'll walk you through those. There is a deadline coming up this week for the small business grants. So we're hoping that our business community responds to that. But once again, if there's anybody that that wants more information, you can find it on our website, written on the homepage. And I've noticed city council that each of you have been sharing that information throughout your own social circle. So we certainly appreciate that. Then the last two things is also on the city's website, we have resumed the street sweeping schedule. And that's available on the website. If perhaps you guys could help us share that information as well. This will be the first sweep. We know that there's a lot of cars in the street and stuff, so we're going to try to do the best job that we can to get the word out. But it is only the first sweep and we will be doing another sweep a little bit later. And then the last thing that I'll end on is that just to remind everybody that curbside recycling is going to start again on July 1st. I actually have a meeting tomorrow with Republic on some marketing materials they're going to share with us. So we're going to certainly get those out through all the city's communication channels ASAP. And then I know at the last meeting, several council members offered to help I'll be part of, you know, remarketing this program. So we're certainly going to take you up on it. We're all going to have to to pitch in. And I think we have about a six month window to try to get our stream cleaned up as much as we can before our audit that we'll eventually have at the recycling center. So we're going to need everybody's help. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the city attorney tonight?
Just to the council and the citizens at large, I'd remind you that the governor's executive order EO 202075, which authorizes these virtuals meetings and under the Open Meetings Act is set to expire on June 30th. There are now 120, I believe, executive orders that have been issued. So I wouldn't be surprised if EO 202075 gets extended. We'll just have to watch that. But I did want to point out that timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Move to comments from the city council. We'll start tonight with Councilman Hursberg.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few notes for tonight. Massage parlor ordinance is in. Thanks, everybody for the work on that. We're putting in operational requirements. Now that we're moved from that, I'm sure many of the council members remember a few months ago, several months ago now, an adult daycare was proposed to go in on Hicks Road. Council denied that. We talked about putting in standards, minimum standards for nursing homes, care facilities, adult daycares, what have you. I would really like to sit down in a study session with council and perhaps the administration to look at what we can do for that. I know some cities do have minimum standards for staffing levels for qualifications of staff. I do know a lot of these places, they have maybe an underqualified staff, residents, you know, they got a stomach ache and they're calling 911. It's eaten up at our EMS response times. It's costing the city money. So I'd really like to sit down and look at an ordinance for minimum standards for some of these places. There are several places like that in town that would fall under that ordinance. Recycling, thanks, Mayor, for bringing that up. I'm a little concerned. We didn't hear more about that tonight. Recycling's starting up in two weeks. I'm still talking to people today and yesterday. They didn't even know that council had approved recycling. They had no clue. So I'd really like to know where we're at. I know you said tomorrow you're looking at marketing materials, but where are we at on resident education? Last council meeting, me and a couple other council members, we talked about doing stickers or something on the bins to let people know what can and can't be recycled. Again, it starts in two weeks, so I'd really like to be hearing more than we have been on that. A little bit concerned. And then just as an FYI, no glass. Things that you want to recycle, they shouldn't be bagged. I know a lot of people think it's a good idea to bag it. Don't bag it. Grocery bags are still never recyclable. You can recycle those at the store. They have a process to do it for the recycle centers, especially the one that the city is using. Those can't be recycled. Somebody brought up the ethics ordinance. I've talked about that in the past. I've talked to council members Green and McDermott about an ethics committee. We asked for a study session. It never came to fruition. But I do support filling the ethics committee. And then just just a few thoughts on economic development. You know, I'm sure many people have heard by now Pizza Hut on Wayne Road is closing. Panera Bread by the malls closing. And I've heard of a lot of the small businesses, you know, nail shops, places like that that are privately owned are closing. And you know, what is the city doing to keep track of that? It's a tough situation the city's in. You know, small businesses are closing their doors when we have grant money available. We have funds available for them. And it just seems like not many of them know about it. What are we doing besides putting it on on the website, putting it on the internet? We got to do more to reach out. Some cities around the state, around the country, they do have a list, like an active business registry list. And if the business closed, they file a paper. They're saying we're closed. They know they have a count of every day of the year, how many businesses are active. We need to get our act together here in Westland if we're going to, we're going to do something. So I think that's it for me. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Move on to Councilman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start tonight by thanking Bishop Shelby of the Burning Bush Church. As was mentioned yesterday or today, Bishop Shelby actually has one of the largest churches in the city of Westland. And there was a march yesterday through four cities, Westland, Inxter, Wayne, and Romulus. Not only recognizing what is going on in our country right now as it relates to relations between African Americans and law enforcement, but he also spoke about the need for peace. And I want to say there was probably about, I guess, anywhere between 700 to 1,000 people who walked all the way to Wayne from Westland. So it was a phenomenal turnout. And thank you, Bishop Shelby, for for that, for being proactive with that. I also want to take a moment and thank Pastor Edward Pruitt of the Ministry of 300, who was on the call earlier today. He actually led the week long peaceful protests that were outside of Westland City, Westland Police, our Westland Police Department. It was it was a, not only a call to action, but I think it was it was extremely well done. And it was a multitude of people, every age, every race, every color coming together, standing for justice for for people, especially black and brown people when they interact with the with law enforcement. So thank you, Pastor Pruitt, for taking up a full week of your time to dedicate and call for change in the city of Westland. You definitely did not have to do that. I also want to thank and recognize the police department here in the city of Westland and also the Canton Police Department. During the march that Pastor Pruitt led, we marched from the city of Westland all the way down to Canton. Our Westland Police Department, as well as Canton, did a wonderful job. And we're actually very accommodating to the request of Pastor Pruitt that he made in terms of the march. They shut Ford Road down for us to be able to march all the way beyond that large bridge down by Walmart. And it was just a great day. The the energy was extremely positive. We even had law enforcement officials out there, me included, who walked along with us. So I would hate for anyone to take away from these protests that are happening nationwide as being anti-police because they're not. You can stand against police brutality and not be anti-police. It is, there is a issue in this country as in regards to the interaction that certain minorities have or the outcome when we interact with law enforcement. And that's not all law enforcement, but it happens all too often to where it's become actually an epidemic. And the term Black Lives Matter, which we're hearing more and more is not, you know, because you hear a lot of people counter that with All Lives Matter. Black people recognize that all lives matter, and we believe that. Saying black lives matter is simply saying my life matters and is just as important as yours. So treat me as if I'm important. It is not to say that black lives matter any more than anybody else's life because we know that everybody's lives matter. But when African Americans have come in contact with law enforcement in instances where they were not breaking the law and they are completely abiding by the request, the outcome has been horrible, even death for certain African Americans. So I would just ask for compassion and 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 maybe a more understanding when you hear black people say black lives matter. We are simply pleading to be treated decently and to be treated as human beings and to not be subject to brutality or even death, whether a crime has been committed or not. An interaction with law enforcement should never result in be a death sentence unless it's necessary to save the life of the officer. And I'm speaking as an officer, as a actually a Wayne County Reserve Sheriff Deputy. And 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 that has been enforced throughout our department by Sheriff Benny Napoleon multiple times. So to the protesters, I want to say I feel your pain. I know it. I stand with you. I support you. I'm going to keep showing up to these protests. I'm going to keep using my platform to bring change, not only to the entire city of Westland, but also to the where there is a need. And there is now a need in the African American community. And to look away when injustice is happening on any side of the badge is where the crime actually is. So again, this is what is going on to to stand against police brutality is not anti-police. And I would actually say I would wager that most of the protesters, if not all of them, they're not anti-police. They're anti-police brutality and therein lies the the issue. But I'll move along from there, but I definitely want to thank both Bishop Shelby and Pastor Pruitt and the Westland and Canton Police Department for protecting the protesters and for walking along with us as well, those of you who who actually did. And then I also wanted to say that in terms of some of the things that I have voted no on, I just want to reiterate for the people that I serve in the city of Westland, anytime you see me vote no on something, especially if it is going against the grain, it is not to be difficult. I assure you that it is much easier. It would be much easier for me to just say yes to everything as opposed to having to deal with the backlash. having to deal with the backlash of being the one to speak up or the one to not support something that has been put before us. But I will never compromise my ethics, my integrity, or the oath I took as a city councilwoman to make any particular person or group happy. My my loyalty is 100% to the residents of the city of Westland, and that is where it will remain. Thank you. God bless you, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Councilman Godbow.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. One, that up at Central City Park, it looks very nice. They've done a great job. They've seal coded the the walking path, did a great job on that. So our parks are starting to to take shape and get back to where our residents should be able to fully utilize them here in the in the upcoming weeks. Speaking of paving, if you haven't been so far down Joy Road, I'd like to thank the county for the work they've done so far on Joy Road. Right now, they've taken it from Wayne Road to about Dakota that it appears the resurfacing is done. And when they completed, it will take it down to ravine, which will, in essence, then complete from on Joy Road, from Wayne Road to Newburgh with a new surface. And it's it's been much needed for many years. So I'm certainly residents in both Westland and Livonia that utilize that stretch will be greatly greatly appreciative of the the new surface. And I just want to take off of what the police chief said in regards to the fireworks and the fireworks ordinance. We've got the Fourth of July coming up, and there is hardly a night that goes by that I don't hear from the neighborhoods surrounding where I live fireworks going off almost every night already. And so please try and observe the the days when fireworks are allowed and hours when fireworks are allowed. There are a lot of pets that don't react well to fireworks. There are a lot of former service people that do not react well to the sound of fireworks going off. And we need to be cognizant of those sensitivities that those people have. And outside of that, I'd just like to wish everybody a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July weekend. Try and remember and observe social, good social distancing practices over that time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Rukowski.
Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to point out a few things and send out a couple of reminders through what we've discussed this evening. One of the more important ones possibly would be the precinct change for the August election for precinct twenty-eight, where you used to cast your ballots at the Burning Bush Ministry. It'll now be directed to Elliott Elementary. So postcards should be coming out to you as according to what Clerk LeBlanc has mentioned. And I'm sure he'll be very diligent about making sure that if you don't receive that postcard, that you'll have some signage available to redirect you. And also remember that there's always the option to vote by mail. One of the things that was a part of our consent agenda this evening was the property transfer affidavit. And that's particularly important to people who have purchased real estate in the city. When you purchase real estate, you file this property transfer affidavit. In most cases, it's for your property, primary residence exemption, or your homesteading. Because City Hall was closed, you weren't able to file that. And so they've made accommodations to waive some of the fees for that. Councilman Hersberg mentioned something about kind of keeping track of our our local businesses. And I think that's an excellent point that he made. And we did pass a budget amendment to acquire add-on software to our B S and A, which will help us track those businesses and the licensing and such. So I think that'll help us in the future have a more definitive database of who's doing business in the city. And and while we're speaking of the city and small businesses, we do have part of that CARES Act loan you have until the seventeenth. If you're a business owner, to file for one of those grants. And, you know, it's, you're not alone. There are some resources available. And, you know, it's very important because a lot of these businesses do employ people who live in our city. So please take advantage of that grant process. There's people at City Hall who will be able to help you through that process as well. That's brilliant. I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July, as different as it may be. I echo the sentiments of Councilman Godbow. Please be considerate with your fireworks. I know this last week, they've been going off like crazy around our home, too. And, you know, it can be quite unsettling. So I'm not asking you not to celebrate, just celebrate responsibly responsibly in all aspects and be considerate to your neighbors. And with that, have a happy Fourth of July.
Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening, and thank you. So I'd like to start out by echoing the sentiments of Councilwoman Green. I had the opportunity to attend yesterday's prayer walk and March for Justice that was put on by Pastor Shelby in the congregation over at the Burning Bush Ministry. It was a great, it was a great prayer walk. It was a great ceremony. It was really a great opportunity to show that those of us who are not individuals of color and those of us who are not African American, that we have a lot of work to do standing with the communities of color, standing with the black community here in the city of Westland and across this country. When we talk about, you know, Black Lives Matter, it's more than just a slogan that we can go out to a prayer walk and chant. It is the tangible work on public policy that we as elected leaders have to do here in our community and across the country. So I'm excited to get to work with my colleagues, with the administration, with our police chief and our department on some of the reforms of the Black Lives Matter movement and that marchers all across the city of Westland, across the state and the country are really looking to to implement. And I also want to thank our chief for walking with us yesterday. We had police departments from the city of Westland, the city of Inglester, the city of Wayne, and also the Wayne County Sheriff's who were there. And thank you to the chief for walking with us and marching with us in solidarity. But also thank you to the four departments for keeping the marchers safe. I know almost a five-mile walk, and it's not exactly easy to have to shut down multiple busy roads in the middle of a Sunday afternoon. So thank you to the Westland, Wayne, Inglester, and Wayne County Sheriff Police Departments for shutting down those roads and through four communities, keeping keeping everyone, keeping all the marchers safe. So I really appreciate that. And thank you to everyone in the community who came out and participated in that and really is shining a light and awareness around the issues and the racial disparity, the racial injustices that we've seen here. So thank you to everybody that came out. I think it was a really important event. Again, thank you to Pastor Shelby and your congregation for putting that on. It was an incredibly important event. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Hersberg, in regards to the need for better standards and regulatory measures in terms of our long-term care facilities, our nursing home facilities. I, too, would like to see some movement on that. If we can put together, you know, a working group, study session, and ultimately, if that's something that we can, you know, legally speaking, draft an ordinance on, I would be in support of that as well as potentially reinstating our Ethics Board. I know that's something that we've, many of us have talked about in the past, and potentially getting some movement on that, I think, would be important as well. And then I will also echo the need for the CARES Act. I've been working with Aubrey Berman, our Economic Development Director, in terms of these small business grants. Again, as my colleagues have said, as the mayor has stated as well, that ends on seventeenth for the small business grant. So get your applications now at cityofwestland.com. For some of the other, the PPE, personal protection equipment, and as well for the housing assistance, there is a longer runway for that. But if you are a small business here in the city of Westland and looking to get assistance, again, you can go to cityofwestland.com from now until the seventeenth, when that application process does expire. And then a couple of other things real quick. One thing that we've been talking about now for a number of meetings, and I know myself, Councilman Hersberg, that brought up on multiple occasions is the covered bus stations. We've had some email correspondence about that this week with our purchasing director. So again, we're really excited to keep that ball rolling and move forward to ultimately implement some of some covered bus stations for our smart bus riders here in the city of Westland. And then finally, to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Rukowski, voting is coming up here. So absentee ballots, many of you have received your request from the city to get an absentee ballot, or you may have received the application from our Secretary of State's office and Secretary of State Benson. So don't forget to sum that in. I know that everybody has concerns with COVID going on and not wanting to vote at the polls. So, you know, democracy cannot be a spectator sport. It is a participatory activity. So please jump in, please get engaged, and please return that absentee ballot application so you can get an absentee ballot and participate in the August primary. And with that, I will wish everyone a very safe, very happy Fourth of July. And as my colleagues have said, please remember, please be cognizant of our fireworks ordinance here in the city of Westland, of the pets, of our servicemen and women who have returned home, who are sensitive to all the loud noises and to the fireworks. And please remember to practice social distancing. We are not out of the woods yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Londo.
Thanks, President Hurd. I'll just start off tonight and just start by thanking everyone that participated in the peaceful protests and the prayer walk. And I also want to thank the chief and his entire command staff. They were out every day. I saw a couple of videos, and I know the chief was out there engaging with everyone and seemed to have a pretty good relationship with everybody and was making sure that everyone was safe and that they had a peaceful protest. You know, Councilman McDermott said, you know, a lot of, a lot of times you can't put yourself in people's shoes. But, you know, in my day job, we've had a few open forums to to create change. I work in the city of Detroit, and it was just unbelievable to sit back and listen to some of the speakers and the courage that some of the speakers had to share their experiences. And this is one of those times where I just, I had nothing to say. I just listened and, and, you know, I called some of them after after we were, after we had our forum and just said, you know, I'm really sorry that you have to go through this. And, you know, I'll try to do a better job of keeping in contact with you. If there's anything I can do to to assist you. But, you know, we're going to keep that conversation going in my day job, and I hope we do here in the city of Westline as well. Just talking about the, I know a lot of people mentioned the city of Westland's care funds. You guys have all mentioned it, but I'll mention it again as well, that the deadline to apply is June seventeenth for the small business relief grants and also for the PPE program, as well as the mortgage assistance grants. To Councilman Hersberg's point, obviously, there's been a lot of social media stuff. We have all pretty much shared the shared the flyer. But I've spoken with Aubrey Berman, our Business Development Director, and she's personally went out and visited locations and spoke with them to make sure they knew about it, sent out emails personally to each and every one of them that she had. You're right, maybe we don't have a great database. There is some turnover at times with with some of these small businesses, but she reached out to as many local businesses as she could get. She called me directly and asked me any people that I knew personally of any local businesses to to contact them, have them contact her to get in touch with her about the programs that are going on. Obviously, she's been working with the Chamber of Commerce with their database to try to get the word out as well. So there are two days left to to apply. So hopefully, these local businesses will will apply and get the help that they need. I know I mentioned I attended the weekly Wayne County Workplace Reentry Business Meetings. They're also going to have some PPA care, PPE care packages available for some of the local business. We'll be announcing that in the next couple of weeks. I'm sorry, they'll be announcing it in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be sure to get the word out to the public on that. And then they wanted me to announce the Wayne County Business Resource Live Webinar is going to be this Thursday, June eighteenth at 1:00 P. M. There's going to be the latest small business financial resources, small business assistance contacts, COVID-19 legislative updates and Q and A. It'll be led by CEO Warren Evans, Wayne County Commission Chair Alicia Bell, Rashida Talib, and Debbie Dingell from the House of Representatives, and Matt Cullen for the Bedrock CEO. So it should be a pretty good discussion. It's going to be a Facebook Live event on the Wayne County's Facebook page this Thursday at 1:00 P. M. Sorry, I got a few notes here. Back to the businesses. I thought of something. I don't know if this will be something good or not, but just going back to the database or just having something to communicate well with the businesses. I thought it'd be nice to have some kind of, maybe like a laminate, like a leave behind with all the city contact information. So the Building Department, the Planning Department, the Economic Development, the Mayor's Office, and so on and so forth. You know, if there's turnover, who knows if they'll keep them or not, but at least they'll have, you know, some contact information there for the city to reach out to us directly, have the chamber's numbers and information on there as well. Last couple of things. The John Glenn High School Parade was fantastic. I know we talked about the last couple of council meetings. And for those that came out, we screamed our hearts out for these for these grads. The smile on their faces was absolutely incredible. It was really, really, really cool to see all these kids going by. You know, they're they're never going to forget this. They're never going to forget 2020. They're never going to forget that they graduated. It was such a different graduation. But there had to be, I don't know, 300 cars or something like that. And it was so nice to see all the folks, residents along Central City Parkway, sitting out there cheering on their their graduates. Everybody cleaned up after themselves. So that was good. We didn't have to go behind and do a big cleanup. But that just that just spurred ideas. I think we need to do more city events like that along Central City Parkway. We have that beautiful strip to do like a mini-type parade or a kids' parade down down Central City Parkway or Carlson. So last two things, I promise. Census. So I reached out to Mo from our Planning Department today to find out where we're at with the census. We are at seventy-three point five percent, which is 1.5% off from the number two category in Wayne County. So that's great news from Westland, but we can obviously do better. Livonia is running away with that at eighty-four percent. But they're typically number one when it comes to the census turn. And so I know we can do better, Westland. Simply, you can you can fill out the form that came in, or you can go to the Census website if I can find it here. You can go to the Census website. I can't find it here. So but please fill out your census form. It's incredibly important. I believe the the deadline is October for 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 you to contact them. But I'm sure there'll be some time for them to contact you as well. With that, the last two things I'll say is the council president is probably going to mention, but he's going to be out of town for a little bit of time. So if there's anything that my colleagues need or the administration, feel free to reach out to me. And everyone have a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Londo. My comments will be brief today because everyone's, I'm sure, tired. And Londo has taken up a lot of oxygen. So Andrea, thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Always appreciate that. I'd like to thank Don Nicholson for showing up early and giving us a little bit of update about how the cruise is going to change up and down the road. I do know a lot of, I know a lot of motor guys, and they are excited to participate in the cruise. So my thought was important, and thank you for doing that. And chief, thanks for letting us know about what's going on tomorrow. I would encourage all of my colleagues to to attend that if they can. I unfortunately will not be able. I have a pretty tough conflict for a while. So I won't be able to attend that. But I'll be there in spirit and look forward to hearing kind of any feedback from the council. And again, I encourage my colleagues to attend that. Same follows for tomorrow's Town Hall. I did have slides put together and ready to present. But we did have to cancel or postpone the last Town Hall last week because inclement weather. Unfortunately, too, because right when I was supposed to come on and speak, average time in the program, my power went out here at the house. So I would have dropped anyway. So so it'll be on tomorrow. I will be unable to participate. So Council President Proton Michael Londo will pick up my slides, and he'll be able to kind of adjust them if necessary and and pick up my very small piece on that very large and more important puzzle from Chief DeJurecik, the mayor, and the rest of the administration, and Chief Schradner. Last thing, too, fireworks. A couple of people say, and I say it every year, you know, and I I know that most people are listening, agree with me. I guess I'm just asking anybody else watching this, tell your neighbor, tell your friend. Please take it easy on the fireworks. It's just, it's frustrating. It's really frustrating. People trying to sleep at night. My dog's going nuts. You know, I do have to wake up and work in the morning. And the vets, the vets do have an issue with it. And these guys, if they know when it's going to be noisy, they plan around that to leave town. But if you're blowing the stuff off at two in the morning, A, when they're in town, B, when I'm trying to go wake up and work and waking my kids up, it's just a really, it's really horrible, nasty thing to do. So tell your neighbors and ask them to hold themselves accountable and be good neighbors, because I know everybody else that watches these probably believes in that, too. So I wish everybody a wonderful two weeks, and I will see you soon. With that, as our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Good evening, everyone.